Okay, well, ladies and...
Gentlemen.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Daly City Library Board of Trustees Tuesday, June 29th, 2017, to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I hope you guys have got your motions and your seconds ready. Yeah, I just turned mine on.
Mine's off.
Yes, I do.
Okay, it's all now.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Louis?
Here.
Vice President Chibunka?
Here.
President Lex?
Present. And...
And absent. Devera and...
Race?
Race.
Race.
Race, thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. I would like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, May 16th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, moved in.
And I'll second it.
Moved in seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 16th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Okay, let's move on to the Director's Report. And let me just introduce this item by saying, in the Thursday, June 8th Business Report in the San Francisco Chronicle, there was a little verb at the upper-left part of the page about libraries will be virtually better. And when I read this, I sent an email to Jayla and to Joseph asking if we were connected to that, and much to my delight, Jayla said, Joseph said, yes, we are, and so we're going to hear about that. Does anyone want to see this, or...
Yes, please, afterwards.
Thank you very much, President Lex. And in fact, I mean, it is very, very timely. There was another news report on KCBS this morning about the projected boom in virtual reality over the next couple of years with Oculus Rift and all of the others out there. They're expecting huge growth in that field. So it's also very timely because we've had this in our possession for exactly Tuesday, since late Friday.
Since Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon, so less than a week.
Wow.
So it's a very, very new piece of equipment to us, and staff is just starting to get the hang of it. And I'm going to turn it over to Jayla for a little presentation.
So, this particular project was a giant donation from Oculus, which is owned by Facebook Incorporated. They also partnered with the Institute of Museum and Library Services. And so we have Khalifa and a nonprofit that's coordinating this. They had, you know, it's a larger project than it might at first appear, gathering all of the equipment and distributing it to more than half the library jurisdictions in the state, actually. So, the nonprofit that's organizing it made a short video, and I wanted to attempt to show it.
Great.
And while she's getting that ready, it's really interesting, the uses that they've found for virtual reality. A lot of big companies are using it for training for their staff, and I found it was really interesting in the National Football League, they're using it for repetitions, especially for quarterbacks, so they get the feel of going through an actual play without the impact. So it's intriguing.
And slightly nauseating.
I was thinking about it for travel. What do you think? Let's go to Austria.
Actually, they have a virtual reality near here that was approved by city council.
Right.
Remember that one?
Oh, yes. Over near Bart Station. We were talking about that earlier today.
Interesting.
Will this let me play with a remote?
Oh, that's great, thank you, Jayla.
It will not.
My name is Sarah Jones, and I'm the Director of the Marin County Free Library. And I'm here talking about our deploy of virtual reality in libraries. This project is an encompassing project of giving this brand-new technology a chance in public libraries. While the technology is advanced and many people haven't experienced it yet, the public library gives a really unique opportunity for anyone, both children and adults, to access virtual reality, both the equipment and perhaps more importantly, the content. It's new to many, many people, but the possibilities for virtual reality are truly immense, and we think they're incredibly important for educational purposes. And really, I think the largest part that I see is giving people the chance to see other places and actually be in other places through the dimensions that they get through virtual reality.
I think that virtual reality has, in the immediate future, a role to play in libraries and education as our capacity to introduce people to something new, something they probably can't afford to buy for their own home use, that they're probably not going to be exposed to in any other way. So, this gives us a chance to do what libraries do best, which is buy something once and have the community as a whole use it over and over and over again. We've done that when computers first came out. You know, we were the first institutions where a lot of people had their first computer experience. And so I think VR is a natural extension of that, of using taxpayer dollars in a really smart way to just try things out that they normally couldn't try.
One of the best things that people say is, when they see something like this in the library, is it isn't something they expected, or I didn't know the library would do that. We really have been a forefront, libraries as technology has come part of our society. We've been at the forefront of making things accessible and available incredibly to people that don't have, that might not be able to purchase it themselves.
I think that going forward, I see virtual reality being useful in all sorts of ways for education, and by extension, in a library setting as well.
Kids love it. Every day, kids come after school, and they're like, is the VR ready? Is the VR on? So we actually had to make a sign to let them know if it's on, or if it's open, or if it's closed. Even adults, too. We get regulars that come back all the time to try to, you know, test it out, and get people coming who heard about it from other places, and then they come by and try it out.
Our first experience with VR happened during Wildcat Camp, and we had about 30 campers here. They were second graders through sixth or seventh graders. And we had three stations set up here, one in the meeting room and a couple in the broad hall. And we ran all the children through all three stations. And so my first impression of VR is that at the end of our experience, we asked the children what they thought of it and if they'd like to do it again. And I've been doing library programming for a very long time. I've never actually experienced every single hand going up when we asked if they'd like to do it again. They clearly found it engaging. We had children exploring Mars in one room and painting virtually in another.
Those challenging games are what bring the kids coming back again and again, is for them, this is something they're not going to get at home, but it's way better than what they do have at home, which is awesome that the library can offer that to children.
Many, many experts today are saying that our kids today in middle school, elementary school, that 65% of the jobs that they will have 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, don't exist today. And one of those jobs, we think, is going to be those folks who have skill and expertise in not only learning using VR, but actually creating the content of VR. And that is truly the crux and probably the main obstacle to virtual reality and these other augmented reality systems, being able to gain a foothold in education, or in the workplace, or in any other kind of environment where this might be a valuable tool, is building that content and developing and designing that content.
Well, my hope for VR is that, you know, especially in this community, is that the kids use it, number one, and they get an experience from it. And maybe, you know, we can have them start coming up with ideas, developing content. Some of the best ideas come from just using it and say, oh, man, this would be cool to do this, or this would be cool to do that. So, that's what I hope. And I hope that, you know, it also attracts people to the library and see what the libraries offer, because we offer a lot. It's not just, you know, it's not your grandmother's library anymore.
So we think there is going to be a tremendous need for expertise in the field of VR creation. And one of the things that we're doing here in Marin County, working with the Marin County Libraries and Computer Education Center, Makerspace up in Nevada, is we're beginning to have discussions about building a production studio, which hopefully can turn out content that could be used by students and folks around the world, but also provide a laboratory or a studio where students who are interested in building this kind of content can get some training, get some experience, and actually go out and build some experiences that would be interesting, engaging in all kinds of areas.
Very cool.
Check that one out by Bart.
Yeah. I wonder where that is.
No, no, it's like a block or two from Bart, and you can go, you pay them, and you can, you know...
Let's hold that for after the meeting.
Yes, yes.
So, as Joseph said, very new to us, as of late last week. So I put together just sort of a brief overview of where we are with it right now. The California Virtual Reality Experience Organization brought out a William Gibson quote that I really, really enjoyed, because it applies not just to this, but to a lot of things, and to what Sarah Holton was talking about, which is, you know, the democratization that the library offers for technology.
So where will this unit be kept at?
So, this unit is, well, I'll talk about that in a minute. So I wanted to emphasize what Joseph was talking about, the importance that futurists are seeing VR having in our culture and our society. And so ALA, our American Library Association, has listed it as one of the top trends to look for, so it's nice to be on trend. And I want to, you know, give a shout-out to Facebook for really donating this equipment.
Yeah.
And you can see, there's a picture of one of our staff using it over today. You can't look dignified using it. So, but yeah, as I mentioned earlier, more than half the jurisdictions in California will have this at the end of this project, and we are one of those. So what we received, I brought just one piece of it, just for show and tell, but there's actually quite a bit of equipment. It's not terribly difficult to move, but it's also not easily portable, so we have to think about that as we're planning our program. So, a chunk of it is a desktop computer, which is not the most portable thing in the world, a 24-inch flat-screen monitor, the keyboard and all the stuff that goes with that, the headset, which I'm going to show you, and two of the sensors and some little game controllers and things like that. Lots of little slick-looking black accoutrements. And then, as part of this agreement, what we are going to be providing as a project manager, which so far seems to be me, staff time in training. They are providing web conferences on a weekly basis, so we're going to be attending those. We've attended one so far. And then this is a big one, which is program planning around this. This is different from most of what we do program-wise, because it really only accommodates one user at a time, which is not how we typically do business. So, coming up with how we can incorporate that in a logical way that makes sense in terms of the staff time that's allocated to it. So we've started that process, and it will be ongoing. There's also security issues, of course, we don't want it to walk away, and, you know, safety as well. The other thing that they've asked us to do is simply make regular statistical reports. There it is. These are the preloaded titles. It's not a particularly, this is not a particularly informative list, because you don't know what any of these things are, but neither do I yet, because we've only tried a few. We spent quite a bit of time in Google Earth, which if you've used the desktop, you know, app, you know. But this is, of course, a very immersive experience. It was, it was really cool, and I would definitely suggest trying that. It also included a couple of applications that are made for orienting you to the whole experience. So here's our project timeline. We applied back in April, and then, and they were very quick, quicker than any other thing I've ever applied for. They let us know we were successful in May. I had requested two systems. However, they did have a lot of response, so they granted us one. We have a signed agreement with them now, and we have received all of our equipment. And so the next step will be, you know, we've unboxed, and we're starting the staff training and equipment testing. So far, so good, nothing seems to be not functioning. Location is a big one, and they do warn you about that, you need obviously clear space. So, we've been trying to, since this arrived Thursday afternoon, we've been trying to unbox it and test it, and we've had people in our community room, and so it just keeps putting us off. So we finally unpacked it, because the census was in the community room this morning, unpacked it in the middle of a work area, and boy, was that a mistake. You really do need the nine-by-nine space that they say that you need.
Wow.
And of course, it needs to be secure, so nothing walks off. And we want to look at how difficult it would be to safely transport it to another location, because obviously, we're going to want to provide this in all of the neighborhoods in Daly City. We also are going to need to establish what the patron interest is, and one, there was a lot, in the video, a lot of emphasis on children using this. There, I think they're using the HTC system. The Oculus system is only considered proven safe for 13 and up, ages 13 and up. So, at this time, that's who will be able to use the system, and I know that's going to be a real issue, because I'm sure every 10-year-old would just really enjoy doing this. So we're going to have to plan the timing and such, when we don't have the younger kids around, so it's not, you know, a disappointment for them. There was an ominous warning, you might want to also have a bucket lined with a plastic bag handy. I'm very prone to motion sickness, I didn't experience that, but I wasn't in there that long. The next, in July, next month, we're definitely going to do some what we're now calling pop-up, but, you know, just kind of more spontaneous programs at ceremony to see, just to try it with the public, get some feedback, that sort of thing. We do have actual planned advertised kind of orientation to the whole thing, September 13th, because we have our fall program coming out. And then we're going to have regular scheduled programming, probably, location is the biggest one, so we'll probably do like, you know, every Monday in a particular month at, you know, John Daly in the little room, because it's going to compete with whatever else is going on in some of the spaces as well.
So you'll do a rotating schedule at the different libraries?
Yeah, we'll figure out what's the most practical way to do that. And that was all I had on that, actually, except for I wanted to show you the thing that kind of surprised me with it. This is one of two sensors, so you kind of set up a little mini array, and I don't know if you've ever used a Wii, but yeah, it's got to know where you are and orients to your body size and all that. And, oh, I think you, this is the super elegant-looking headset, but you can see, it's quite a heavy piece of equipment.
I was going to ask how... Oh, that's not too bad, yeah.
It requires a display and an HDMI port. It requires a fairly powerful computer to run it.
They look like huge Coke bottle bottoms.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, whoa.
Oh, that's not too bad.
No, it's not heavy, which is good. I mean, yeah, when you're carrying everything, I'm sure.
It was not so much the carrying it around, but when you have it on your head and you're trying to get your operating tools, it slides down.
Oh.
You just feel it. It's a fascinating experience, I definitely would invite you. Let me know if you want to drop by and try it out.
Those are really some magnifying... Did I break it already? It's already on its first trip. That's cool.
Yeah, we're very excited.
Yeah, I think Google Earth would be a lot of fun to, did you fly around the neighborhoods?
Yeah, well, we went to ceremony, I was stomping all over the test grounds.
Is it almost like Disney, that ride soaring?
There is a Disney one you can do.
Wow.
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's going to really engage the community. I think particularly, I think John Daly is an excellent place where we'll roll it out. We're going to start at ceremony, simply because our technical team, which is our circulation manager and me, are there, and so it's easier for us for testing purposes.
Coolness.
Anyway, I will update you as we progress, as I said, it's very early in the process.
I'm going to have to go sign up.
Well, first of all, let me thank you for taking advantage of the opportunity, because it obviously requires a commitment, you know, of time and effort. It's on top of everything else that's being done, not only by you, Jayla, but by other librarians who are going to be involved. But I would have been very disappointed if we had not done this, so I can't thank you enough for doing it. Also, very nice presentation. It'll be really interesting to see how this evolves. I wonder if there's a health and wellness component that we could tap into?
Don't sit near somebody with the controls in their hands. Bam.
I think there were actually some fitness-related ones.
Would it be possible, in this early, I'll say, beta stage, for a member of the Board of Trustees to come in and give it a little try?
Absolutely, definitely.
And how would you like that to work?
I think probably setting up appointment.
Yeah, just set up an appointment with me.
Give you a call or an email?
If we can do it at ceremony, that would be ideal, yeah.
Okay, well, and would it, just for working people, be during the, let's say, nine-to-five period, or what timeframe would you envision?
That would be most convenient for me. But there are evening hours at ceremony, Monday and Tuesday, so we could certainly make an accommodation, I know people have jobs.
Any other comments or questions?
I can't wait to try it.
Yeah.
I want to try skydiving. Then I don't have to jump out of the plane.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to branch overview.
So, President Lex asked me to give a little more in-depth information to add on to kind of what we went over very briefly in the handout from last meeting, so I have a PowerPoint for that and a printed copy for you. Give you my copy. So, this is a history of our hours changes since the last downturn. It was, it actually sparked an interesting discussion at the library, because I've been working for the library for 16 years now, and there's one or two people who were there before me. And we remember, all this has happened before. This is definitely, I would say, the most dramatic reductions in hours, but we're remembering, you know, a couple of dips early on. I remember there was a little bit of a budget crunch, and at one point, we had Sunday hours. When I started, we were open on Sunday at ceremony, and that had to be eliminated. We expanded hours when the new small libraries opened, and then we had to reduce, we reduced hours at Westlake, actually closed Fridays at Westlake, and the Westlake staff had to come over to ceremony. We eliminated the weekends at the branches. So, there have been many, so it says prior, but that's, it wasn't like, it was like that since the dawn of time. We've had many, many changes over the years. So, but this is, these are the most recent adjustments we've made. And they are based on the staffing resources that we have available to reliably keep branch open. That is, we know the resources that we have, and we try to spread that as thinly but securely as we can, and you'll see that. It is, it is based on, you know, use, but also, you know, being confident that we will have somebody there to keep the library open. And then, this, you had asked for kind of a longitudinal look at the circulation, which I love looking at in the form of a line graph. These are our four libraries, and you'll see those, those big downturns in December. December is a slow month in general, however, those were definitely years where we had been, staff had been furloughed, and so the libraries weren't open for a period of a week, and that, you can see that that made a big difference there. And you can also get a sense, I think you're all quite familiar, but with the relative busyness of the libraries. This is just one measure, this is circulation, but, you know, the other ones generally tend to mirror it pretty closely in terms of the relationships between the branches. And then, I think this is important, because you'll see that there is an overall downward trend. This is for the entirety of the Peninsula Library System. And you can see that we're experiencing this really county-wide, and I think, you know, it has to do with a lot of larger trends in society in terms of how people are spending their time, where they're getting their information, how kids are doing their homework, what teachers are requiring them to do. So, there's a lot of different factors going in there, but we're, I don't know, we're on trend. Normally, that's a good thing, maybe not so much here, but I just wanted to give it a little bit of context. And then, this, I think, is also very interesting. This is the loan borrowed within PLS. So, obviously, we freely loan and borrow to other libraries in our system, and you can see the relationships and how they've changed over time in terms of, definitely loaning more to other libraries, which I think speaks well of the selectors, what we call our selectors, or those are the librarians, well, all the librarians, select materials in various, various subject areas.
This is us loaning our...
So the, you'll see, on the left side of each fiscal year is loaned, and on the right side is borrowed. And you can see that it used to be a little more equitable, and it seems that we seem to be a net loner in these last couple of years, which I think is interesting, and it might have to do with, we are pretty diligent about what we call pulling holds, which is we run a paging list of items that have been requested, and so that may factor in, our diligence may factor into that.
So just to clarify, and I think Lynn was asking this question as well, does loaned mean that we are loaning it out?
Mm-hmm.
And borrowed, we're bringing it in? Okay, thank you.
And I want to note, I don't think it's a super significant factor, but this also includes things, other libraries' materials that we have renewed within our building, and our materials that were renewed on a staff computer in another library. It's a, it's a small number of the total renewals, but it does include that, and there's no way to separate those out. And then, I was looking at circulation, but public computers are another pretty significant service that we offer, and this is another, just a look over the years at public computer use. Now, we do not measure use of the public access catalogs, the homework computers, the terminals for things like printing and signing up for a computer. This is solely the internet computers, and it is number of sessions, so 14, 15, for some reason, was a, was a big... 14, 15, for some reason, was a, was a big year. There are a lot of people, if you, you've all been in the library recently, and you'll see a lot of people on their own devices, obviously, that's factored into the use here. So you do see it is declining, but they are still quite busy.
Poor little Bay Shore.
And then, I thought, for context as well, this is the, the number of computers, public computers that we have, not including kind of utility computers, like I said, the, the computer that's used to release a print job at each location. There's also a computer, sometimes the same, sometimes different, that's used to sign up to get an internet computer, things like that are not included in this, but all the, you know, the sit-down user, a computer kinds of things. The specialty computers are computers that, you know, can be used for doing, you know, photo editing. They have a scanner on them. We do have a couple with scanners on them, but that, that one is, there's one at each location that is specifically set aside for that, so.
I'm just curious why John Daly has a larger number than Westlake. Is that because of space?
Because when it was built, there were computers around, and there are outlets and tables for them. We would love to squeeze some more into Westlake. There's, there's simply no place to do that, because you need space, you need a power outlet.
Right.
Yeah, it's absolutely a space issue. And, and, you know, John Daly has, it's all kind of centralized, and, you know, and Westlake, they're spread out along the periphery, so definitely, it was not arranged around that. And then, ongoing branch program, this is programming that's done by branch staff, so you can see, Westlake takes on a lot of, mainly weekly, there's a couple of things in there that are monthly, but mainly weekly programs. There are storytimes at all locations. We used to have two, but with the hours change, you'll see the small branches went back to just one, because they simply couldn't squeeze two in there. Some of those things actually are school-year-only, the Homework Club and the Zone After School. There's two things that I did include that, that don't yet exist, but they are coming in the fall. We're committed to, and that's Open Idea Lab time, that's going to be adult programming at ceremony, and then Pause for Tails. Barbara worked so hard to negotiate to have the, the dog program, reading program, available at the Westlake Library, so we're pretty thrilled about that. So it's, it's a lot that, that people take on. I think I've shown this many, many times before. Again, just for context, this is, you know, at, you know, right, right at the downturn, this is where we were at in terms of staff, full-time staffing, and we're down to this, and actually, you can see under the Westlake branch, we do currently have a vacancy. It leaves them, you know, there are vacancies. We're, we're a city agency, and it takes time to fill a vacancy. They're civil service, and so we go months, months without being able to fill. And it's, you know, when you, when you have a five-day-a-week location and you need people to be there to open, it strains, strains the staff. And then, this is just also another way of looking at it with FTEs. You'll see, like, we have .8 of a person, and that's actually because, as, as you guys are well aware, the Bay Shore and John Daly staff are essentially the same, it's one group of staff that are split between the two. And just kind of the, the staffing, there's a, a full-time professional librarian, either split between or dedicated to each of the locations, and that person not, is not just providing, you know, the, the stuff we all signed up for, reference and referral services, but they're also managing, they're supervising the branch staff, they are handling any disputes, they are responding to the, all of the teeny-tiny little crises that, that come up every day. So it's a very, very busy job, lots of different things going on at once. Library assistants are what we call paraprofessional staff. It's the clerical staff that, they help you at the front desk, but they also have a lot of off-desk things. All, you know, all those materials that go out, they all come back, and in fact, more come back than go out, and they all have to be physically handled, and there's just a lot of, a lot of moving of books and DVDs and CDs from here to there and everywhere, adding new magazines, changing things that are new when they become old, releasing things that are new, that sort of thing. And then, library aides or part-time staff, these tend to be college students with, like, several other jobs, and we go through them pretty quickly, but they are absolutely near and dear to us, and we could not, could not operate without them. They provide customer service mainly at most locations, but at the smaller branches, Bay Shore and John Daly, they also participate in the programming, because there's not a lot of other people to do that. And then, we have library pages, and these tend to be, there's high school students, but there's, there's a few, you know, people who are out of high school as well, and they re-shelve materials for them. That's mainly what they do, but they also, you know, when people look at something and leave it, they pick it up, so they, they heard all of the books from here to there, and I think that was it.
And they feed the fish.
And they feed the fish. At, at Westlake, they do feed the fish. They do, they check the doors to make sure they're secure, they, you know. Everyone has a really vital role to play, and, and we're actually currently in the process of hiring both of those positions.
Of the aides?
Pages and aides, yes.
Oh, both, okay.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I know that I appreciate everything you're doing with the eight less.
Did that answer some of the questions you had?
Yes, yeah, this is very good, and in fact, what I would like to do is reproduce this and present it at the next DCPLA meeting. I think they'll be interested, I think it'll be motivational, in a sense, to see where we were and where we are, and because everybody in that group wants us to be, you know, as vital and as service-oriented as possible, and this will help them appreciate the limitations that you face. So if that can be part of your report next time, that would be great. Is that all right?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I really do.
All right, super, thank you. As a matter of fact, let me just add one more comment. I really like the bases that you touch, the points you touch on here. It helps me understand the roles and responsibilities of the different positions within the library, rather than just have a title there, you know, this last page is very-
So, good, good.
-useful, as well as the rest of the information.
Mm-hmm.
It was very informative. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the, speaking of the Daly City Public Library Associates, they did ho, help, excuse me, they did hold a meeting earlier today. A number of things were discussed or decided. The first item was the Board of Directors. John Furelli, who's the CEO of Seton Medical Center, who has been on the board, resigned, and has been replaced by Pauline Fong Martinez, who also works at Seton now, and former Commissioner of Arts and Culture Commission, where she was very successful. So I think DCPLA is fortunate to have her on their board. Financial statement was provided. Upcoming events were discussed, as well as the book sale, and there's really nothing new to report on the book sale. Last time, we said that they had generated about $5,000 net profit, and that's where it stood today, give or take a few dollars. Let's see. Thank you letters are going out. Next item that was discussed for upcoming events was an author's talk. Kara Black and Susan Shea are two different authors that write mysteries set in Paris. That author's talk is going to be Sunday, July 30th, at 4:00 PM in a theater at Seton Medical Center. Further information will be coming out, but if you'd like to attend, and I hope you will, put July 30th, 4:00 PM on your calendar. Another item that has been discussed for the past several meetings was the Soapbox Derby, or a facsimile of that, and the DCPLA board, I think, has come to grips with the complexity of that and feel they can't sponsor that this year. The idea is not off the table for the future, but they're looking instead for a scaled-down version called the Pinewood Derby. That's a program that's been run by the Cub Scouts, and I don't know how closely it's going to model that, but they're looking to organize and have this Pinewood Derby, I believe, on October 7th, as I recall. It's also to coincide with the opening of CarMax over in the, I'll call it the New Auto Area, down the hill from Ceramati. Membership report was made. There are 23 new members of DCPLA. The goal for the year is 50, so we're pretty much on track, as long as we maintain that pace. Renewals were discussed, and I think that's going to be discussed, excuse me, at the July meeting. I'm going to, because I'm choking up here, because I'm going to cut to the chase on a couple of items. A grant application to the Danforth Foundation for Bay Shore Furniture has been approved, although at only half the level requested, $6,000 was requested, $3,000 was approved. The South San Francisco Rotary Club had a lunch on May 25th, and DCPLA received a grant of $1,000 from the Mardi Gras event. The Daly City, City Council has a library subcommittee meeting. It did meet on Monday, May 22nd. Adrianne and Jane from DCPLA are members. I'm a member, and Ray Buenaventura and Judith Christiansen are the council representatives. I thought it was a productive meeting, although it covered a lot of ground. The goal is for the subcommittee to meet on a monthly basis, to become a little more focused and active. There was a little discussion about grants to be given to the city in July to cover the aquarium and Bay Shore Children's Area. We haven't set a date yet. And-
DCPLA.
It's the second one.
Thirty.
Let's see, moving on, Chayla made a report on the library, talked about the very successful teen space ribbon-cutting event, and I touched on the summer learning program and the terrific presentation that Barbara Daniels made at the last meeting. Next meeting of DCPLA will be Tuesday, July 18th, probably at Seton Medical Center. Any questions?
Just to add one quick thing.
Any additions?
We do have a date set for the presentation of the grant, and that's going to be at the City Council meeting, regular meeting of Monday, July 24th.
Okay, well, that concludes my DCPLA report. Any announcements or communications?
Just that summer learning is, is ongoing, and it's never too late to, well, it will be too late at the end of August, but it's not too late to sign up, join us, and get a free book for our young readers, and opportunity to earn some great prizes.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Anything new on Deborah Doyle and board training?
She's not responded to my email, so I'm just going to go ahead and reach out to some, to the general account of the California Public Libraries Advocates.
Okay, thank you. Any suggestions for the agenda for the July meeting?
Our board member?
Well, hearing none. If you have an idea, please-
We'll email it.
-send them to me, and it always seems like something comes up within the month that gives us a couple of agenda items, so I suspect we'll, we'll have something to talk about.
What about the fifth member of our board, or is that offline?
Well, I said I'm going to follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay, not having any members of the public present, we will dispense with public comment. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn the meeting?
Before you adjourn, I would like to invite all of you to the Independence Day Celebration at the Dolger Senior Center on Friday, June 30th. DCPLA will be there.
Okay.
I'm sure they, they would like assistance staffing their table, and it's always a good day.
It's, um-
Fun.
Is Elvis coming this year?
Elvis is not coming this year.
Oh.
The seniors have had enough of Elvis for now.
Oh, okay.
He may return one day, but they're making a youth movement at the Senior Center, which I think is cool.
Yeah.
So the Altaloma Middle School Jazz Ensemble will be performing. Members of the Altaloma School Band are regulars at the, they, they perform at the Senior Center quite a bit, but this is like the best of the best of the band in their jazz ensemble.
They were there last year.
They were not. They've-
There was a band there last year.
Um-
Summer band. Maybe I wasn't there July 3rd. Let me take that back.
You may be thinking of the 25th, or 35th anniversary.
That's where I was.
That was the band, and they played a couple other times.
Yeah.
Also, from neighboring Pacifica, California, the Foggy Coast Kids, which is a group of young bluegrass musicians.
Oh.
So the two headline entertainers at the Senior Center, I think it's, it's kind of cool that they're all very young. It's, you know, people start showing up about 10:30, food between 11:30 and 1:00, entertainment and fun all day.
Yeah, it's fun.
Is there a schedule for the, the entertainment?
There is. I don't have it committed to memory, but there is, so I can, I can send that out.
Okay, sure, you know, sort of the start and end times.
I think it's in the Fog Cutter, and it's also online.
I, I don't know that the schedule of the entertainment's on there, but we'll, I'll talk to the person coordinating.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to getting something from you. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you. We'll be there.
Okay.
If I don't work.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.